This is BNN, the Bennington News Network.
Hi, Jeff Grimshaw, BNN. Here in Merchants Park, we heard at the most recent Select Board meeting that there's going to be some changes to here, Merchants Park, and to 336 Main, another green space that's going to happen. We're going to show you what happened in the meeting, and let's take a look at it right now.
Good evening. My name is Michael McDonough, and I'm the Chair of the Better Benning Corporation Design Committee. And we're going to present and talk with you tonight about work that our Design Committee and others have been doing on two very important opportunities within our community. The concept of what we're talking about tonight, and specifically that involves the empty lot at 336 West Main Street and Merchants Park. The concept that we're going to be sort of trying to fit into or move forward is one that was born out of the development of the Memorial Park between the courthouse and the Better Benning Corporation, which was done as a collaboration between Bennington Rotary and the town, and a number of service and design professionals within the community. And that concept was that we had an opportunity to develop a series of well-designed spaces, intimate and open, active and passive, forming a string of parks and becoming a hallmark of our downtown for residents, workers, and visitors. We have had a lot of discussion about the lack of what traditionally one finds in downtowns, particularly in Vermont, that being the Town Common or the Village Green. We don't have those kind of spaces in Bennington, but we have the same needs that those spaces and other communities fulfill. And so we want to find a way for us to do it in a manner that is marketable, in a manner that makes the experience of our downtown a much heightened one. And so the effort that we moved forward on came after we approached the Select Board and offered our assistance in assessing what these two spaces could provide in terms of open people space within our downtown. And the people behind this effort, specifically is the Design Committee, and their names are listed there for you to understand the people that serve on that committee. The first space that we want to talk about is what we have sort of termed "the park" at 336. We kind of wanted to have a catchy, quick ring to it, and so the park at 336 became "at 336," and we even have amongst ourselves been talking about this space simply as 336. Now, as is the case with both of these, a gift presented the opportunity for us. The gift at 336 West Main Street involved the purchase of that lot by Heather Meneely and then turning over the ownership of that lot to the town of Bennington for this specific purpose. The goal at 336 is to create an accessible, quiet, and comfortable people place within the confines that we will talk about. And as the case in both of these projects, one of our initial tasks was to identify a design team that could move forward with the development of concepts for both of these spaces. And in this case, that design team certainly involved Heather, the gifter of the lot, who has a very deep commitment to seeing something very positive happen there. Of course, the BBC Design Committee, which I've already referenced, and there are members of the Design Committee here tonight, Edie Suwitzki, Mel Surdam, and of course Heather is here as well, and our Director John Shanahan. And in both instances, we knew that though we could certainly develop ideas and concepts, we needed assistance to formulate those ideas and concepts into schematic design. And so in both projects, but in this one, in this case, we sought out the assistance of two design professionals who are associates of a local architectural firm, Kelly Clark and Ryan Gerboldi. They're both here with us this evening as well, and over an extended period of time, they assisted with and tolerated the input and ideas, foolish as they might have been, from the design team and the Design Committee in particular. And we are very excited, not only with that 336, but also the second project we were talking about tonight, we're very excited about the product that we put before you. Now, I should mention that the purpose tonight is to sort of bring you up to speed on the ideas that we have generated and to talk about how we move forward from this point. Now, as I said, we're very excited about both of these concepts. There is an element of determining whether these concepts are in tune with what the town, the Select Board, and the community may wish to happen at both of these spaces. And so I don't necessarily expect us to leave here tonight with the thumbs up and "hey, that's great," but we want to generate the dialogue so that we can begin to move forward after tonight's presentation. And so in each particular case, and in this instance at 336, we did our own site analysis and came up with a series of assets and challenges that we face, and we've highlighted two in particular that we think were important elements, if you will, to inform the way in which this particular space could be designed and used. The first of those, the fact that it is framed by architectural elements, buildings, creating an open room, and second, that it is a very small and intimate space. On the challenges side of the ledger, there is the reality of rear access and utilities for adjacent buildings which are located at the back part of the site, and the small lot size. And it's interesting often that when you list assets and challenges, you may find the same element on both lists. In this instance, it's a wonderful, small, intimate space. It's very small. So from that point, we developed a design program, sort of a listing of the things that we thought could be and which we would like to have accomplished at 336. And so working closely with Heather, and we certainly respected and honored the commitment that she has made, she has skin in this game more than the rest of us. And of course, the Design Committee formulated a series of design goals. And you see, I'm sorry, did I not? Yes, I did. And you see that list there, but I would like to highlight three in particular that we think are important aspects regarding the use of 336. The first would be to provide primarily for passive activity. Small space, it's not going to have a lot of activity in it, but there are a number of kinds of passive activities that could occur within that space. Secondly, and this is a definite design challenge, establish a human scale within the building canyon that is that space. It's surrounded by buildings on three sides. One of those buildings is a very delightful human-scale building, and that's Katie Cleaver's shop, and we're delighted to have Katie here with us tonight. And of course, on the opposite side of that space is Fiddlehead, the former bank at Putnam Square. And so you've got very different things going on to frame and shape that space. And lastly, to incorporate a water feature as a unifying downtown theme. Now, this goes back to the very beginnings of this thought process, the concept, where the Memorial Park certainly was centerpiece by a water theme, a water element, and that being the restoration of the Bennington Elementary School Fountain. And so as we looked at this concept of a series of these spaces within our downtown, it certainly became apparent and somewhat historically correct that water could be an important element in all of these places. Bennington was once known as the City of Fountains because we had a wonderful array of fountains with our natural water pressure coming out of the mountains scattered throughout our community. And so Kelly and Ryan went to work and developed a very interesting and wonderful concept for us that we want to put before you tonight. One is an idea generator to illustrate the possibilities that exist. I think one of the problems with looking at an ignored piece of property is to be able to envision what could be where what currently is not. And they have done that in a very wonderful way. And I would first note that one of the other very nice aspects of this lot is that it is open to the street on its south side. And secondly, it doesn't offer or doesn't pose a great deal of design constraints. As one looks at that empty lot that is just sitting there, probably the largest design constraint is removing the fence that Heather is desperately hoping will one day soon disappear. And so one of the first concepts that Kelly and Ryan hit on was the idea of bringing that space out into the sidewalk. And you'll see on the plan to the right and the perspective on the left, you see that the space extends out into the sidewalk. And so you don't simply just walk by 336. You have to touch it to go by. You have to walk on it and in essence sort of become a part of the space as you pass by. And they're proposing two elements that would reinforce that, not at the curb point because we have parking along the street there, but set back from the curb, some sort of planter and bench elements which would mimic the planter, the permanent planters that we have in our downtown now that are developed and maintained each season by Bennington and Bloom. So it would continue that particular component of our downtown streetscape, but also provide a seating element as the park space is extended into the sidewalk. The second piece that we were really excited about was the idea of creating an intimate space deeper in the site, deeper in that canyon that I referenced earlier, so that as you entered this little intimate space, there will be a place where you could arrive at, removed from the streetscape, removed from the traffic and everything else that goes on in the street, and simply have a place to relax, to gather your thoughts, to read a book, to listen to music, to do anything that you might want to do. And so the really interesting thing about their design, and I sort of feel funny talking about their design, and I've asked them to chime in at any particular point, but we really liked the idea that their design created a kind of intrigue into that inner space. And so you see a little narrowing of the walkway through that resulting from the circular wall that they've created, also additional seating, to guide you into that other space. And once you've made that little journey, you arrive at a place that is not on the street, and we were really excited about that. The third, or next challenge that the space presented was that one of scale, the shop to the west, the three-story bank building to the east. And so they masterfully identified a way in which we could introduce that human scale with this circular wall that reflects that circular theme that they developed within the space and provides a number of different assets. One, it screens the space from that utility space that is behind that wall in that particular rendering. It creates an element which is human scale as opposed to a three-story brick wall, but it doesn't attempt to hide the brick wall in any particular way. And it introduces an opportunity for adding a material, a softened material, in their concept being one of a weather-strong wood, which you'll see in the patterning of that wall, and then the wall being softened itself by the introduction of vegetation on that wall. And so it sort of creates that space in that room once you enter the space. The water feature proposed along Katie's shop, we think, introduces a great opportunity for water movement and sound and everything that that might bring to the space. And then lastly, there is this space in front, and this is the one that I think captivated us perhaps the most. Where the narrowing of the paved walkway into the inner space occurs, there is a grass space. One of the things we talked about was having both hard and soft surfaces within this space. The vegetation on the wall, a hard surface and softness. And this tree that you see planted in that particular area, and the grass that is introduced behind that sitting wall, creates a wonderful place. And we remarked about the fact that they illustrated a couple of children sitting on that wall, and the one thing you can't see in that still photo is that the next thing that they could do is roll back onto the grass and just enjoy the softness of the grass underneath the tree. And so we were really excited about the ideas that they were able to generate to transform this eyesore of an empty lot into a true asset for our downtown. Now, the second space that we want to talk to you tonight is Merchants Park. Now, the gift there, we all know, is a gift by Merchants Bank of the park space to the town of Bennington. The goal that we envisioned was to enhance an important downtown public green space. And I think that the thread, the design thread that we held on to as we went through this process was the fact that we were enhancing what is already an important downtown public green space. And we'll talk about that as we go through this. We had a different design team in this particular instance, the constant being the Design Committee, and the design professional that we were able to take advantage of was Elizabeth Thompson, Maricor Vista person who has been working this summer with the Bennington County Industrial Corporation. And in the same way that Kelly and Ryan offered to give of their services pro bono to us to assist us to get to where we got, Elizabeth was also willing to do the same in regards to Merchants. And of course, you see there a picture of Merchants, how it exists today. And so we took a different approach with Merchants. The intimate space of 336, which has naturally the handprint of Heather on it, we felt that the community aspect of Merchants Park needed more of a community handprint. And so the Design Committee determined that the best way to achieve that was to conduct a charrette. A charrette is a fancy sort of architectural term to describe a gathering of people with a goal in mind and brainstorming ideas for achieving that goal, whether it be a building or whether it be a public space like Merchants Park. And so we developed two basic charrette goals that we wanted to achieve, and that charrette was held in this room. We wanted to catalog the property's assets, and we wanted to identify the site use options that would exist on that particular site, and you have that list of those potential options there. And so we also did a site analysis on Merchants, looking at assets and challenges. And the two particular, three particular assets that we felt were most important was one, the proximity to businesses and restaurants and its central location. And one of the fascinating things about that open space is that it is surrounded by a certain kind of street vitality, restaurants, shops, the art gallery at Fiddlehead. A great deal going on around that space. Secondly, again, as was the case with 336, it's kind of a blank slate for design and use ideas. It's a big, open lawn, we know how it's been used in the past, it doesn't offer a lot of constraint to us in that regard. And the third piece that we thought was actually very important was the existence of the mundane, the existence of the drive-through canopy and the driveway. And we thought that those were definitely important assets. Now, the principal challenge that I think shaped our design approach was what we have all experienced if we have used Merchants Park as it currently exists, for instance with our summer content series that the BBC once held each summer. And that is the noise and safety consideration from the streets that surround Merchants Park. And so we thought that that challenge needed to be addressed in any particular design scheme that we developed. And so as with 336, we developed a design program, and I would highlight the three elements that are on this list. And this design program was very much generated from a very large group of people that attended this charrette. It was a wonderful two-hour conversation about what could happen with Merchants Park, and it ranged from "do you leave it as it is, it doesn't need anything else," to "here's the ways in which we can enhance the use of that particular space." The first important design element that came out of that conversation was to use the canopy as a covered stage venue. It's there, it's a solid piece of architecture, and we would probably be foolish to think that it had to go away. That other piece that I just talked about from our challenges, produce or develop a barrier for protection from passing traffic. And we talked a great deal about what form that barrier could take. Is it a wall? Is it a fence? Is it something else? And we'll show the ideas that we settled upon. And then I think the overall writing theme is that whatever happens at Merchants Park, it needs to be a multipurpose, flexible space. It needs to accommodate a great many things that we can envision today or that we might not envision happening there until five years from now or 10 years from now, whatever the timeframe might be. It ought to be a space that will adapt to the kinds of uses and needs that the community develops. And so with the help of Liz Thompson, much the same as we did with Kelly and Ryan, we developed a schematic proposal for what could transform Merchants Park from the lawn that it is now, and I've described it as a lawn that you walk by. In the same way we talked about just walking by the space of 336, this is very much just a place that people walk by. It's interesting, if people thought that this tract of land was something to walk on, you'd see a path worn from Putnam Square over towards Your Belly's Deli because people would walk through. The grass is great because nobody goes in. So we wanted to create a way in which to make them go in. And so you see on the left, a rendering, a view, looking up Pleasant Street, across North Street, of the northwest corner of the park space. And then on the right, you see a plan which Liz helped us develop, which contains a few very important elements that I just want to mention tonight. First of all, it's hard to see from a distance, but the part that you can see is that the driveway and the locust, the locust canopy of the trees that were originally planted along that driveway remain. We concluded that that was an important element that would be difficult to duplicate, difficult to replace. It provides shade, provides backdrop to the park from the street, and so we thought that that should remain. We have though proposed, and very light ghosts you see there, that the pines that are also, that are located in front of that locust stand be removed because we felt that the pine trees really didn't add a great deal to the enhancement and use of the park. Pine trees are not the kind of thing you sit under. The locusts, on the other hand, aren't the kind of a tree that you would want to be under. And so that's the backdrop piece, and of course the canopy remains too as long as the driveway remains. We knew that we had the infrastructure, the site elements at the back of what was the former Merchants Bank, the paved, the paved walkway that's there and the walls that shape it. We saw no need to propose that any of that be removed and thereby saving the expense of removing those elements. Now, the other main design component that we addressed in our design program was the need to have separation from the street. And we, as I said, we talked about fencing and walls. We decided that we didn't want to do fences and walls. We didn't want this to be a space that was designed, looked like it was designed to keep you out. And so what Kelly, I'm sorry, what Liz proposed was to introduce a series of planting beds, and you see one of those planting beds in the rendering, planted with perennials, which in the, if you look at the circular walk that transects the park, along Pleasant Street and then along North Street, and then at its southern terminus as you approach Putnam Square, there are three planting beds which essentially provide a barrier from the street. It's not a wall, it's not a fence, but it gives you a sense of separation from the traffic. And so that leaves the interior of the space for the multi-function uses that very likely would involve the use of the canopy and the stage area there. There are two access elements that are proposed for the park. One of them begins at the rendering in the left, which is that paved element that draws you into the interior of the park from the north. And the second is that path that I could never figure out why it didn't develop in the space. That path that would take you in essence from Putnam Square to Pleasant Street and beyond. And so that path becomes the boundary between the open green space and the planting beds along the street. The last elements that Liz proposed and that we were very excited about, some fixed seating along the path on its edge along North Street, another element of fixed seating towards the northeast section of the park where a water feature would be located, that water feature is yet undefined, and a third bit of fixed seating down just to the right and above the stage area. And then utilizing the space near the locust and the walkway behind the bank for seating and tables that people can move around, can put them wherever they want, a place to sit and have lunch, a place to sit and be on your laptop, a place to sit and play board games or what have you. And so we came out of this process, which was a long process. There was a lot of thought that went into this and a lot of cooperation from a lot of different people. We came out of this process, we think, with two really exciting and legitimate ideas for the ways in which the town could utilize these two spaces. And so that brings us to the question of next steps. And we've titled this process "Creating Community Parks Downtown." And so the next steps to create these community parks downtown would involve Select Board approval to move forward. And that first piece is to determine whether the Select Board views these schematic design ideas to be appropriate directions for us to proceed. Secondly, would be then from your comments and input to produce final design materials, as I said, per your input. Third, determine a project team and identify the town components in that project team, much the same as was done with the Memorial Park next to the Blacksmith Shop. Probably the most important piece, develop project cost estimates so that we would have some handle on what each of these particular projects would cost us. And then project funding is obviously going to be And then, project funding is obviously going to be the thing that bridges from empty lots and underutilized spaces to enhanced space. And that would include the possibility of municipal support, either direct monies or in-kind services. There was a great deal of significant in-kind assistance from the town at the Memorial Park, fundraising grants, community donations of services and materials, then the permitting process that we would have to go through, and then the development of appropriate construction drawings and specifications. And so, we want to close, but I want to offer Heather in particular and Kelly and Ryan the opportunity to offer any particular other aspects that they would like to. I know Heather has a good message that she would like to deliver. But we want to offer a thank you on behalf of the design committee to Elizabeth Thompson, to Kelly and Ryan here with us this evening, to Heather, I think we're all in great gratitude to Heather, to Merchants Bank, to Michael Harrington for all of his assistance through the process and getting us hooked up and connected this evening. And lastly, the many citizens that participated so thoughtfully in our charrette, which took place here. And so, I want to open it up, first of all, to Heather, if you want to offer that last particular sort of pep rally thought that you had. And then, to take questions from the board.
I have no idea what I'll really say, except that I've had plenty to say at the design committee meetings and poking everybody to get going quickly. And this has taken a year. I bought the property in May and in July it transferred to the town. And this is July the next year. So, I've been looking at that piece of property since who knows when. I remember when it was a little cafe, a little all-night place where you could go have breakfast. People would leave the bars and go there to get their coffee before they went home. And it's, it's just, interestingly enough, when we were, John Shanahan and a group from probation and parole and I went and started digging out weeds, this is quite a while ago, and we found all kinds of stuff, including a diner plate and two knives. And I believe Katie has some glassware that she found when she was putting in her garden in the back. So, I just feel like I'm emotionally tied to the place. I've always thought of it as a place, I think everybody somewhere deep down, sometime during their day, needs a quiet place to sit. And it's not the coffee shop and it's not the ladies' room. It's just a place to go and breathe and think. And maybe you're there by yourself or maybe you're with 10 other people, but they're all by themselves too and they want to be. So, that's, that was my dream. And it's coming very close. It's changed a lot since a year ago. I had a file this deep with pages that I'd torn out of magazines and I should have showed them to Kelly and Ryan and a couple of them were, "Oh dear, no, you can't do that Heather." And no, the park is not going to be done by September of last year. So, I've hit a wake-up call, but I'm still really fired up about it and I think it's, I just love it for Bennington, because I love Bennington.
Thanks Heather.
Thank you. And so, what kind of questions have we generated this evening? Or is the discussion one that needs to progress to another night?
No. I'm really by trade and otherwise not, someone likes to sit around and wait. What's the timeline of getting this park for Heather and for Merchants Bank? But what can, we've got a nice bullet point where we've got to go, how do we get there quickly? I cannot have another year. I know the design part is one of the foundation, but how do we get to the, let's get the shovel in the ground?
I think the first step in that process is to put some numbers together. And I think that that can happen in relative short order, particularly if we use the model, again, that was used at Memorial Park on South Street. With those numbers in hand, we have to formulate a way in which to reach out to the community, to reach out to benefactors who might have a particular interest in either one of these projects. And it does raise the question of whether we attempt to do that sort of simultaneously or whether we separate the two. I would be hopeful to suggest that by next spring, we might have resources in hand that would allow work to begin at either place, noting, I suppose, that the actual improvements to 336 are probably more involved in the kinds of improvements we're talking, that we're talking about at Merchants. But I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility. Again, I keep going back to Memorial Park, those of you who were involved in that will remember that actually the improvements there were phased, centered around the placement of the fountain. But the pathways and landscaping and lighting were all done in a series of steps, in some instances utilizing grant monies from the state. But I think it would be important to, particularly to maintain our friendship and the sanity of Heather, to be able to see something happening in the next construction season.
That's good to hear. What about, unfortunately, what I call it, the neighbors on 336? You know, Katie is here. What about the Fiddlehead on the other side? Is this going to be a sufficient setback or accommodation to the neighbors? How have you dealt with that?
Well, in particular with Fiddlehead, we've taken pains to make sure that we don't impact the Fiddlehead property in any particular way. The wall that we talked so much about would be offset and not a part of the structure, attached to the structure of Fiddlehead. That access question that I raised would be addressed by essentially a hidden door, a passage from the park space into that utility space behind. So, there would be a door in the wall that would not be apparent unless one opened it. Now, access now is currently gained to that utility space and there are propane tanks back there and rear entrances to those buildings along North Street. That access is now gained from behind, I'm going to call it the Left Bank Gallery, I don't know what else, Catbird, but you know the building that I'm talking about. And that access comes from the CCV parking lot. But because we're not sure that anyone can guarantee that continued access from behind Catbird, we thought that it important that there be access from the public space into that utility space.
There, folks, where you come.
God. Exciting, exciting. How long does it take people, when you put a new park in, to really get used to using the park, to making it part of their daily lives?
It's a good question. Kelly, you've got any thoughts?
Um, well...
You might want to come up so that they can hear you out there in the other room.
Well, hopefully that'll happen.
Just identify yourself, Kelly.
Oh, sorry, Kelly Clark, one of the designers of the first park.
Welcome.
Thank you. One of the key parts of the design that Mike talked about was, was walking through the park when you walk on the sidewalk. So, we're really hoping that that will make people start to use it really quickly. And, you know, I think when, I think as long as there's enough press and when it opens, it's in good shape, you know, that people will get excited and will come check it out right away. And it's a very visible location, so I don't, I don't see that being a problem.
I'm not looking at it as a problem. What's that transition time to all of a sudden it becomes, it becomes people's park?
I mean, there's no, there's no way to predict. It's in a visible location, so I think it should happen pretty quickly.
Thanks. I have another question if it's okay, Mike. Tom. Mike, you, thank you Kelly, you mentioned when you talked about Merchants Park, the canopy remains as long as the driveway remains.
No, actually, the canopy and the driveway remain.
Yeah. Period, there won't be any change in that?
Well, we saw asset where one might consider just lost utility.
Okay.
The canopy certainly addresses the need for a covered performance location. And though it could be enhanced by maybe elevating it a bit, but that would be expensive, it would serve that purpose as it currently exists. The one thing that would need, that we've talked about modifying is the drive-through underneath the canopy, which now has curbs and an island. And we would envision that those, that space between the curbs and the island would be infilled with a material so that you would have a flat surface underneath the canopy. Would still allow the movement of vehicles from Pleasant Street to North Street. And the reason that we thought that that was appropriate was, one, the farmer's market and the ability for those vehicles that service the farmer's market to have site access directly and would allow the vendors in the market to be able to utilize their vehicles from the drive. Access for performers to the stage venue with their equipment, rather than having to schlepp it all the way from one of the adjacent parking lots. And we even talked about a place where, and we know this summer Ryan Hassett has put together this, this wonderful wagon tour of Bennington to bring visitors around the community. We envisioned the drive as being sort of an important stopping point for that kind of function. It could be a loading place, an unloading place, and really in a very nice environment.
Thank you. That's a good take. It'll take a while. Time is short, please, because I think we're running up against the clock here.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I would, I wonder if the answer to Michael's question in terms of when does a community fully embrace a park? Maybe we know that from the farmer's market, which is when you start needing bathroom facilities for the amount of people that are there. And I wonder if there's been any thought to that. I hate to even go there at this point, but if we're really successful, we could end up with a situation that's tough on merchants if we didn't have some plan for, for the number of people that might use it. So, was that in the thinking at all for the Merchants Park?
No, it wasn't. And I think that there has been reservation generally on all our part about how we introduce that kind of facility within the community. I would suggest that that particular site is maybe not the most ideal place for it, though there is need. But it would, it would encroach on the use of the site, if you will. So, no, we did not consider facilities to be at Merchants Park.
Actually, we did talk about it briefly, not as part of our parks, but I had, at some time during this process, I had spoken to a really wonderful stone artist who lives up in Stowe and was asking her about, you know, the possibility of her doing some work here. And probably was, her work probably wasn't appropriate. But the first question she asked me was, "Where are your public restrooms?" And I said, "Well, there's one here and there's one here and maybe if you buy a candy bar here, you could go use their restroom." And she said, her, she does so much stonework and this is what she's done for her whole life, and her comment was, "Unless a town offers public restrooms that are visible," and this has always been a pet peeve of mine, "but every town, when I travel, that's the first thing I want to know, where are the restrooms? And do I want to go in them?" She said, "Unless a town offers visible, clean, nice-looking restrooms, you're going to have people doing it outdoors."
That's what we found at the farmer's market.
And even if, and this could be somebody with a three-year-old child who has to go really quickly. Go stand over there, pull your pants down to it fast. So, in my mind, after these two parks or even during these two parks, I think that's what, before another third park goes in, I think we need to figure out where those restrooms are going to be. Really important.
That was nicely clear.
Any questions?
I have some design questions and a safety question and a few other things, but maybe I'll take it up with you later, please. In the name of expedition.
And we can put this on another agenda too, because there's nothing that we have to really say yes or no to today. Because I think the exchange is really good. I hadn't even thought about the bathroom, restroom areas. Those are the type of things that we should hear about, talk about. So, this is really preliminary.
Absolutely.
So, but just to, if there's something that you want to get out there today so that they can give that thought, the, with the design committee, please go ahead.
I'd love to see the water features incorporate some sort of renewable energy, if possible. I'd love, I always hate looking at those things and wondering how much electricity is involved in circulating water. So, that's my great one.
Yeah, no, just really, really nicely done. You know, 336, very small space, but it built with the curves, the aesthetics that you have there, the landscaping, the centerpiece, I think was a nice piece of artwork, the water incorporation. It turns it into a very nice, open, intimate space that really, I think, would allow people to want to walk downtown, even if they're not going to stop at that park, but just to walk to dinner instead of drive there. So, very nicely done. And then Merchants Park as well, I see the same aesthetic appeal. So, just kudos for doing what you've done and I think it's in good taste. And of course, the generosity of the gift as well is very appreciated, I think, by all.
I'm excited for it. Heather, you've been talking about it with me for quite some time. And I agree, let's get a shovel. Stu, do you think the town could lend us one for Heather, for the groundbreaking?
Lend you a shovel?
No, Heather, for the groundbreaking.
Yeah, we can provide shovels.
Beautiful design, you know, very good concept. It would certainly be an asset to our downtown, so I look forward to seeing the contribution.
Thank you. What I'd like to see is another visit with, next to the bullets about the next steps, some timelines and some costs.
Numbers, yes.
Because that's going to really trigger both the investment by public and private. And I think we've got to get that word out on the street. And the sooner that can get done, the more realistic the next spring construction is. So, let's just keep in touch through Mike and Michael, so that we can make sure that's happening. And then revisit in a couple of months, probably.
Wonderful.
And that's all right with the rest of the board.
Okay, so there it is. You've seen everything there is to see. There's a lot more work to be done, a lot more questions to be answered, and we'll get them to you just as soon as we know them. In the meantime, we'd love for you to comment. What do you think? What do you think of all this? Do you think it's going to work or does it need more planning or more design work? We'd love to know. Like us on Facebook. We'll see you soon. Jeff Grimshaw, BNN News.